Oh, and we want to talk about.
Hi Vanessa.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm gonna let you guys keep reading.
Yeah, we're just doing our staff level stuff. DOT is going to get here in ten minutes. The council meeting will start at five thirty.
Okay.
Hi Vanessa. Hi.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Permitted to work with in the right away, but they are not.
Yeah.
As much as you know.
This is.
Yeah.
I'll be.
Well, I gave.
Good to know.
How close.
And very soon.
There was settling right at the edge of the pavement and took pictures and sent it to them and gave them.
What's that?
If you if you see something that seems. Yeah. They can work in that area, but they're not supposed to use traditional estimation methods so that the road doesn't be. Or settle.
Yeah.
They need to. At least. Stay long like that. Mm hmm.
What's the golden number?
It's residential.
Fifty percent of surface.
Yeah.
Fifty and five and.
No.
All underground.
Wow.
They're. Hotel.
But I will say.
Five hundred grand for all of town. A little bit.
Push it over.
Oh, wait.
December.
Blushing. You've surprised them.
The long runs.
Then they would unravel.
Yeah.
Happened.
So.
Tell about.
Keep it all in there.
So you'll get it back. New residential. So. Broadcasting video and audio.
Okay, great. I'd like to welcome everyone. Am I supposed to do that thing?
It'll find you.
Find me. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Council Workshop of September fifteenth, twenty twenty two. This is a joint workshop with M D O T representatives. We also have representatives from the Water District here and various town staff as well as representatives from the principal group who has been helping us with the planning. I'm going to start with real call for the council. Michael.
Present.
Krista.
Present.
Marty.
Present.
Dan.
Present.
And I am also present and if we'll just kind of go around quickly to do formal introductions for those watching at home. I'm Sandy Carter, Town Council chair.
Nate Rudy, Town Manager.
I'm Crystal Chapel, Vice Chair.
Michael Curtis, Councilman.
Kristen Musenski, Town Planner.
Martin Manny, Town Council.
Alex, Public Works Director.
Joel Hassel, Joel Palmer.
Dale Doughty, Director of Planning, D O T.
I'm Steve Call and Regional Planner at D O T for Southern Midcoast Minimum.
To make you present, that's something that we introduce yourself at the time.
Well, I know where water district.
It's purposeful, it's a great woman.
And. Wow, Vanessa Barfins will group. Thanks. And with that, we have a really packed amount of things to cover, so we're going to just jump right in. We had two workshops and the D O T was gracious enough to find time to watch those for us, which is very helpful. Out of that, we created a list of items that we were agreed upon that we feel should be in the project. Presenting them to the D O T to find out if they'll work or not, and then understanding that anything that is above your scope would be something that we would have to fund. Since you're covering certain scope and and we're asking for things beyond that. We did receive a very draft report from the principal group today, which was shared or yesterday, late yesterday. The we're not here to really dive into all of that, although we'll be using the drawings and the general large recommendations as a base for our conversations. The principal group will be coming to the Town Council meeting on September twentieth to do a formal presentation of the report to allow the council to provide additional feedback. And then through that process, we'll finalize the report. The report will then be used as a blueprint for the town for our village planning. Obviously, the infrastructure is a large portion of that. So I think Nate also sent an email to you guys kind of summarizing some of our top questions and comments from, it looks like mostly from the second workshop. And then we also have some questions from the first workshop, but you guys watched it, so you probably where we had stormwater in particular. And then I also forwarded a list or an email with a PDF document from the Water District. I want to thank them for pulling together the information for the pieces of the project they would like to coordinate into this larger project. So if you guys have any questions on that, I know it was just sent to you.
No, I think we'll just get into it as we go.
Okay, sounds great. So I'm using Nate's document to start, I think, would be easiest if everybody has that one. The first big item is the review of the Collykill Main Street intersection. And so I. Have a couple of warnings, but if you watch that. First. That first meeting, we're kind of went watch through some options around a small roundabout was talked about. Having some sort of island with multiple curves. There was discussion of having a teardrop medium strip. Colored pavement. We when we did the village gateway proposal to the residents, we put like a mock up of a. Roundabout. It's not a full roundabout, just. Pavement to slow traffic down. Some of the questions that we had in our meeting was how much of this piece of property would have to be used? The town had this recently changed ownership and the town had approached the previous owner and bought that buying portion of this. And the planner, director of community planning isn't here, but Doug advised in our workshop that their way that the lot lines were discussed with the property owner, they're aware that that. That triangle isn't needed for them to meet the standards that they need to do to do development. If we needed more than what we anticipated, which is one of our questions, where is the line to make which makes that lot non-performing? That would be something the town would discuss with the owners with. Based on what they're planning or doing with the property. So that would kind of fall back for us. So I don't know if you guys got to the point where you had decided what you were thinking about doing there.
But a little bit, let's um, can I just talk about where kind of I was based on following the US? You know, obviously, we have a project that's in design. It's kind of a whole right now because of the visioning when we met. Kind of wanted to go away for a few months and kind of do do some of what you've done and what we're going to discuss tonight. So some of the stuff we haven't continued to gather data right away or anything like that. So things we'll talk about tonight. We can talk about in concept. We can talk about there are probably some places where we can give you some definitive answers. There are some places where we're probably going to say, you know, we're going to need to collect some more data and look at some traffic and things like that. And then there are others we may, I didn't see any, but there may be somewhere we say that probably just doesn't really going to work, you know, and. That doesn't mean we won't still look at it. We do understand, and I think it was great that those were on video because we really understand some of the town's objectives. Probably not as well as we will as we go through this process. But but so I think we can work towards many of those, and this is a good, this will be a good example of of one of those locations. There is, you know, in the end, and I think Alex pointed out a couple of times, we need to strike a balance, you know, we know what the town desires. And we want to make things walkable on a human scale and speeds at a scale that are representative of the downtown. And I think today, maybe that's not what happens out there every day, including was I was driving over there today. So we understand those objectives and we're going to work towards those objectives with you. But it's also a state highway that serves more than just gray. So we've got to find balances and we want to work with you. And we'll dive in here in a second. One of the things I would really hope we would do, and I know I brought this up a couple of times. Is as principal group finishes their report, and it sounds like it's five days from now, it's going to get presented to you. We really would at some point like to sit down with them because the last thing that's going to work for any of us is things come out in a report that. Or things come out in our design that don't work for you, things that come out in your report that just can't happen from from us for safety or other reasons. But there's a public expectation around them. So I think the sooner we can get to a place where we can sit down with you and Coral Palmer and others and go through these things in a little more detail and then go collect some information and come back. Before we get too too deep into some of these would be helpful and we'll definitely go through things tonight. We man up in different places on different things, depending on what we know about them, but. I really think it's usually when we go through these visioning things lately, it's less the town goes away and comes back. It's more we do it together and it just seems to work. One last, one last point I want to make when I dive in because it'll be relevant to what we're going to talk about today. We have a design project. We could do a planning study and we talked about that in detail. I know the town would desire us to continue the design project to get to a solution sooner. I understand that and we're good with that if if we can find a way to get there. At some point, we're going to need to fund this for construction. So what our process will be, once we get things back on track and Will knows this very well. We will start a design process that brings us to something called setting vertical and horizontal alignment, which is really looking at the options and laying out the options. It sounds a little a little more narrow than that. And then we'll drive to something called former design report, a P D R. Once we get to a P D R, we'll know kind of what's what's what we've all either come to an agreement or get the consensus or get to some place, right? And we've all got the rough design. We've looked at the alternatives in detail now. We've kind of decided on where we're going here or in the next few months. But then we're going to drive right to a design and that design won't be a final design, but it'll be far enough so that we can put a cost and constructability to it. At that point, we can start looking at funding and I'm sorry, I'm kind of rambling a little bit, but I want to kind of put it in context of some of the decisions we're going to make tonight. At that point, which if we kind of come to this place where we can start design soon, let's say we start next month. It's probably going to be about ten months to get to P D R. Could be twelve months. And I think that's consistent with a timeline that Ernie had given you guys last spring. And of course, everything's just been plowed out a little bit. At P D R, we can really stop talking about either trying to find internal formula funds, which are federal and state funds. To fund it. The bigger it gets, the more expensive it gets, the more detailed it gets, the harder it is to do the formula. So the other avenue is to look towards some of the new discretionary grants or earmarks. Those we really need to get to that consensus, really get to P D R because we don't. Try to acquire those unless we know the project can be built and, you know, kind of the public controversy or whatever has been, I hope there isn't any here, but this has gotten to the side. So, you know, if you kind of map forward from here, that's next fall. Next fall is the next time we pick up our work plan and we stop looking at twenty five and twenty six. For formula funds or next spring would be when things like rays, when C D S, when Condesation Desert spending, what used to be called earmarks. Would would come out and the requests would come out. So that would be not this coming spring, but the following spring. And again, I'm sorry to go through all that, but it just kind of puts things in context. It also puts some urgency to all this. So if we can come to some agreements on things and move forward with the project today without going back to planning, that's great. But we're thinking about about a year from now, kind of getting settled and trying to figure out what's the best avenue to secure construction fund. Does that make sense? And I'm sorry to deviate from this. We'll get right back to this, but I think it's good for everybody to kind of understand the timing, schedule. Discretionary funds are discretionary. The D O T has, being has a great track record. We've just received four. And we've for our state, our little state, we we do great and our delegation is great at that, but there's no guarantees, right? So we want to get in early, get in soon and get in with a really robust project. Anyway.
Yeah.
I just want to flesh some stuff out for the council members who might not be familiar with world construction projects with the D O T. Some of the things that Dale said. We had conversations on the second and on the ninth, and there were some different questions and perspectives brought up about concerns about things like travel lanes, things like that. At the end of your conversations both times, what I heard from the council is your support for moving along with the plan that conforms with the twenty twenty comprehensive plan. And with the general overview of the designs that you saw from principal group at that time. And the the town staff remains committed to providing you whatever we need to do for the vision that that you want that we can work out with the D O T. So I would just, I would just say, please don't be. So I would just, I would just say, please don't be deterred. From embracing the vision that's in the principal group proposal, because it is attainable. And we will help, we will do our part on town staff uh, to contribute to making sure that that gets done. When it comes to the design schedule, I just wanna, I want to ask a couple of questions because I want to be sure I understand this right. The vertical and horizontal alignment component, that goes out to engineering and that's a very, that's a very expensive investment. Of of time and energy for the people who do that. So once you, once you get that, that's a pretty big cost. You're invested.
We we are very invested.
Right, so that's an engineer making sure that like all of the. Driveways and all of the road aprons and things all make sense in the design. So that we're not designing a road that can't be built, or if it's built, somebody's gonna go over an edge to get into their driveway.
So what in the lane was, what, you know, if there's a. A shared path, just seeing some of your uh, plans, you know, that would be all of those things. And then P D R wraps all those together and suggests um, an alternate, one of the alternatives.
Is it accurate to say that by the time you get to generating the P D R, the preliminary design report, we're pretty locked in? It's gonna be really hard to make any changes after the P D R is issued.
Yeah, I think minor changes go right through construction, but the overall, the the, once we get P D R and P D R is accepted, right? That is really the alternative that we're driving forward.
So it's important for us to understand that when we get to preliminary design report, it's not preliminary really in that use of parlance. It's pretty close to the final, the final version. So within ten or twelve months, I hope the timeline is shorter than that because we did start a while back. Um, that's pretty much. You know, the final draft. And then, you know, like I, I just want to convey that from our perspective on staff, we definitely understand the need for urgency and that's part of the reason that. We recommended for council to uh, let Principal Group come and help us. So we're doing what we can do to help stay on target for that schedule.
Sure, thanks, I think that's helpful. Um, so then one question before we dive into this project then is the emergency fix. And where that stands, because if we're looking at twenty-five, twenty-six.
Um, Alex may be talking to him more than I have. I didn't get a chance to check on the way down today, so.
Last discussion I had with Ernie suggested that this was something to occur next construction season. But there would be the small um, drainage component to the first leg of Yarmouth Road. Um, replaced repaired. And that there would be the melon fill through the village intersections to cover all of that up to get by until this project occurs.
And that has no impact in what we're doing.
No, and that was the last I, I guess you really must have a conversation about the same time, because that's. Nope, it doesn't.
So you feel confident you have confirmation from them? They're gonna do this?
He, at that time, he provided um, drawings, the plan for it, so I I'm pretty confident they have what they need to move forward with that in that time fashion.
Yeah, we are, we are going to do it. It's just a timing.
Yeah, I I haven't seen anything as far as the um, the funding and bidding out in the month, but that's.
Where?
That's the next step.
Is it possible to get any sort of letter of understanding on that?
Councilor, there is a win number assigned to that.
There is a win.
Yes, if you'd like that, it's.
I would like that.
Two, five, three, eight, five.
And that, that, that leads back to um, when we were actually talking about going back to planning and doing, doing a little more, so that, that, that win has reared. I think Lorraine's still our project manager on as far as I know.
Any other councilor seventy questions so far? Dan? Yeah, okay. Alright.
Start off practice from.
Alright, so back to Colley Hill. So that, as far as you know, there, Ernie has in. Because last time we had our meeting, Ernie had talked about wanting to square around.
Yeah.
Looked at it somewhat, but not in detail is what we think.
No more than that, because I guess again, we kind of just set things aside at that point. So things should say be frozen, but they're relatively frozen since then. Um, kind of back to Nate's point, we haven't put a lot of. Um, effort into continuing design or collecting data because we wanted to make sure we were doing it in the inner right path. And a passion that would result in a project in the end. Our original plan was to square up um, Colley Hill. Um, and make it a more teed intersection.
And that it kind of aligns with what the principal group is suggesting for that as well. So if you're having your meeting, I think that will be good to. Walk through those options. There is a driveway there, there's also our right of way. And um, that kind of complicated some of our discussion when we were talking about. Uh, the turn radius, I think Will did a good job explaining. Along with Doug, that no matter what we do there, there's probably gonna be still some issue with turn radius for certain vehicles. So, um.
I think the island and things are things we can work with um, with you. I don't know that it will. In the end, may not be an island, but I think um, the idea that, um, at least I think the idea from from your perspective is. Um, managing traffic speeds and introduction, introduction to a village. Um, I think that's something we can work with you and your consultants on what that might be. Um, again, we need to strike a balance for a lot of things, including. Uh, making sure we're stepping down speed so there's not conflicts of speed, making sure that you stepped it down enough so that there's kind of be some pedestrian issues ahead. Um, and then making sure that trucks can navigate it and don't get the place they shouldn't be, right? So. Um, whether it's an island, whether it's that, whether it's a bump outs or. And of course, maintenance is a big portion of all that, um, plowing and things. So. Whatever we come up with, we understand that around Colley Hill is where you want. Introduction to your village or an indication that you're now in the village or.
And it may be, and and you'll see this in their drawings a little bit before that, because our property extends beyond Colley. So really, the gateway property might be a better.
Yeah.
Starting point. Um, we've also, and I'm kind of jumping ahead a little bit myself, um, are considering extending the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from. Where it ends at American Legion Hall, all the way down to Wayne Avenue, which is beyond Colley Hill.
Excellent.
Keep filling up this way. You'll get to Wayne.
Yeah, second.
Uh, because if you follow Wayne into Rockwood Terrace, it connects to this property and there's already a walking path to the school. Or the freight park. So we want maybe type, obviously, funding is going to be. A driver for everything that's asking for, but that's something to keep in mind when we're looking at speeds and design.
Thank you very much. I think that makes sense. Where wherever the introduction to the village is where it makes sense for everyone, I mean, you do something, I I get that. I think it's in the questions, but we should circle around to sidewalks in general, it's on.
Yeah. Uh, and the gateway property, property is really kind of our. Discussion to have with the principal group and and others, but we are looking to add additional potential. Residential streets through there, so something for you guys to keep in.
On the plus side, the principal group design simplifies the road. The main street aspect of it, we're not, you know, it doesn't present a bump out or it doesn't present an island or anything like that. It's just an intersection. So that hopefully will make things easier for uh, for Ernie and for the engineering part of it.
Um, so more, more side streets off of this, uh, this public property, so that presumes. Quasi-public, public, private, housing development.
It probably, no, not necessarily. It creates a a street network that um. Creates more frontages for whatever is going to go in there, raises the land value. And we in in this proposal, that is a catalyst site. So our, the thinking on that from Principal Group is. Don't look at it as one big parcel, look at it as. Um, several parcels that you can use to meet certain different needs, whether it's housing, commercial uh, office space or physicians or whatever else.
One of the, and one of the larger benefits to make it work and. Some of this may be way further down the road. Uh, because right now, in order to even do this, we have to meet with data recreational fields, so that may be what's over here to start with. Um, but generally speaking, you're gonna at least need some sort of entry. Point. No matter what we do, and then potentially trying to connect that over behind. This row on Main Street, which would help to move some of the residential traffic. Off Main Street, through those two very overused intersections of Brown and Shaker and then the big one.
But that's a. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty year plan.
Could be, I would say reasonably, yeah, five, ten. One of the other advantages to this is it will relieve traffic pressure at the intersections that people know that they can take a different route.
Part of the housing crisis the way it is, that could be quicker, right? You know.
Yeah.
It could be, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that is part of what we're designing here. It's, our focus is on the streets, but it's also about everything on the streets.
Of course.
Well, and the pressure to move that field is. Is partially to allow the developer to do more with that parcel, and so they may be. They've already talked about having, wanting to have a road through their driveway that connects over the shaker. So it may be faster because of those moving, the two parcels involved would be ours and that developers. So.
Interesting.
Alright, so. Why don't we skip to the sidewalks since we're already kind of talking about that? We'll come back to many more. Um, so our understanding is that your project is going to, and Ernie confirmed this in a previous meeting. You're gonna replace any existing sidewalks as part of the project.
Where the, if there, if, and I think. Trying to figure out how to, how to phrase this so it's accurate. So the way I'm, I'll talk about a match policy, then I'll come back to this project. Because there, there's some, there's, there may be some differences. So existing sidewalks um, inside um, compact. Are replaced under our policy act, typically at um, a twenty percent municipal investment. So it's twenty percent shared or replaced. Unless those sidewalks are being replaced for a variety of reasons. One, sometimes they're being enhanced because there's an acute safety issue. Um, and or it's because the project requires they be replaced, whether it's making sure utilities get consumed or something like that. Then it's a hundred percent. And that's kind of where Ernie is, um. New sidewalks, depending on where they are and how they integrate, could be up to fifty fifty. This depends on where they are. I think there are some unique things here. Um, we're looking at our match policy. And kind of in respect to village, the kind of the village concepts. Um, so I think you'll might see a a modified policy probably between now and. Beginning, around the beginning of the year. So that that may not stay. If we're doing things that um. Are maybe a little broader, uh, maybe in the public interest and connection, and depending on. Which funding track we take, are we gonna use regular formula funds? Are we going for. Uh, a grant that is really looking more holistically at gravy. So we're, we're selling the grant as a village upgrade, right? If we did that, then sidewalks tend to be much more inclusive. Um, we base our match on something else and we can talk about that there. So. I think as design goes, um, those kind of considerations can can come along and I think will. Our sidewalk policy, our match policy is gonna mature a little bit very soon with our new long range plan, our new active transportation plan, so. Um, just the, 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 it, I think we're gonna be, it is probably gonna be um, better, not worse, so um. May not be perfect, but I think there's always gonna be some municipal investment in some components. Now, if the sidewalks are separated by N S P I, they're not today, and they add additional um. A cost to a formula project or looking formula project, then we're gonna have to talk about those, or if the sidewalks have. Um, elements like you want a a special surface. Um, maybe those differences might have additional costs, or you want special lighting. Tell that beyond what D O T would typically use. Again, under a formula project. Those may be what are called local interest projects that you may, you may pay for a portion of up to fifty percent or, or depends on what it is. Again, under a grant, you may be wrapping all this together because we're selling it as a package, so. Uh, I hate to be vague about it, but it's a little bit vague depending on which track we take and. How, uh, how much this fits into the broader village concept that. That Principal Group's working on and how how we package all this stuff together. So that's something between now and P D R, we we have this conversation.
Well, that, that actually is helpful for us, because um, as we move through our budget season, we have to come up with our funding piece. And so we have the worst case scenario, that's the best way to.
Probably twenty-five, twenty-six, so it's a couple of budget cycles away, you know, in a way, right? Uh, uh, Sanford, I'll just give you example, in Sanford, we did a mul- multiple planning studies with them, so. We did with them the work that principals doing for you. And again, I think we need to stop partnering from here forward. And I think we all agree with about that, but. We did multiple ones. We went in for, we went for a grant. We do their, you know, Sanford's an old mill town, right? Their whole downtown. Separated bike path, whole bunch of things, park and ride. Um, we secured twenty-five million dollars in federal funds and the way that's gonna be matched, because it is a, an enormous project. And it was that concept from the beginning, it was, it's ten percent of the non-federal share, so ten percent of the twenty percent. I mean, half of the twenty percent is um, hours and half of the twenty percent, but it's twenty-five million, it's thirty-three million dollars, that's which small of this, so. There's a lot of avenues we will go, once we get it, once we get it on paper, once we get to that P D R and we can talk about.
So in that case, Sanford pays ten percent, the state pays ten percent, like the federal government.
I did the federal language entirely, but I need to stay away from that because it's very confusing.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Um, and anything that you put in is gonna be A V A compliant.
Absolutely. Can't do anything.
What's the minimum sidewalk width that's allowed for an A V A? Is it five?
I think is it four with every two hundred?
It's four and then, yes, and then there has to be an ability for things to pass every, I can't remember how long it is, but you remember well, it's, it's not very far. Yeah, sorry, you can definitely see the person coming to a toward you, um. So I think we try to stay away from fours where we can, um, for our winter reasons, um.
One of them is maintenance.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and Alec, you preferred five due to equipment.
And Houston, we are forever picking up sidewalk pile. All and things like that, so absolutely. Other things. In other parts of the city, um, as Principal Group works forward and it gets the winter maintenance. There are places where sidewalks make a lot of sense and should be, and but they have to be plowed in the winter, they're not good for nine months of the year. Other places where multi-use shoulders might work better, um, because Alex can or D O T can drop a wing, so. Just be thinking about w- winter maintenance and what you want to commit to that, because maintenance, once the sidewalk's built, is cities, obviously, no, so.
Dan?
I'm sorry.
That's right. Dan, did you want to say something? I think he dropped off.
No, I'm here. Um, in, I was just curious about. What? I know the track for the project planning. How does the decision-making about funding fit? Where does that fit on that timeline? I think ultimately it would be good if we could actually create a timeline, you know, maybe a broad one, just with months. Out, you know, however long, twelve, eighteen months. And plug in where some of these decision. Points are so that we can just kind of keep track of it, because it feels like we have, you know, there's a lot of plates spinning. Each group has kind of uh. A different set of criteria, criteria and needs as far as the. Decision is going, so I think it just would be good to bookmark. I don't think it has to be super complicated, but. Um. I think it would help all of us just to sort of understand where each organization is at. Maybe it would just be M D O T that. The town and uh, the Water District, you know, to start. So. That's the, the future, and I guess the other question is, is how does, how does that decision on funding ultimately get made?
So I'll, I'll address the first one. Um, we, we did develop a timeline last early spring, I think. I think we shared it with Sandy and Nate. Um, obviously, that was starting design in um, back in, I think it was May. So we have one from May. Um, what we can simply do is sit down with Ernie to make sure nothing's changed, um, especially once we know a little more. Um, of these specifics, you know, there's something in the specific that's gonna take us a little longer. Uh, but we can take that timeline. That's where I came up with the, you know, ten to twelve months for a P D R was off that old timeline. Um, so we can resurrect that. One of the things Steve and I were talking about, and I think we recommend, um, is that. Maybe we enter into a um, a design M O U with the city, with the town, saying, no, these are some, um. These are some things that we've decided as concepts to move forward. Here's the timeline as you suggest of what we think will go on, and here are the decision points, including uh, probably which funding avenue to go. Um, to answer your question about funding avenues, um, that, there's a couple of things there. Um, one, we definitely want to work. One, we definitely want to work with you, and it's really going to depend on your broader vision. That's why the housing thing is important. Because if we were to choose to go down a. Special funding avenue, whether it's an earmark or whether it's under one of the grant programs. We need to compete, and when we compete nationally, or if it's an earmark, we certainly need to convince our legislators. That our delegation, that that's, this is a worthy project. How we tie together all those other things and what this means to, you know, housing and what this means to being able to walk the work. What it means to greenhouse gas reductions, all of those things come into play. So we would weigh all those and we'd talk with, obviously talk with you. But we'd weigh all those and, and understand the competitive, you know, the competitive kind of environment that this project is in. If you get to that place where we're getting close to PDR and inside your community, you have some discord. And people have, you know, have disagreements about the decision, that plays into the competitive desk. Cause all of those programs tend to work better when you have community support, which why I'm glad you're doing all the things you're doing. But that, that happens around PDR, you know, about, be about a year from now if everything went well and went on track. And we decide which avenue to go down. So it would probably, we consider it the first time on formula funding and the next work plan and it has to compete with the other projects in the state. Or we would be looking at the next series of notice of funding opportunity from USDOT, which publishes that following spring. It tends to be when Raze happens, when earmarks happen. Some of the other ones happen later in the year, so we'd be looking at that year, probably eighteen to twenty months from that. But we would be talking about this and coming up with which avenue we want to go as we work towards BDR.
And, and within, within DOT, Dale and the commissioner, Bruce Van, noted really, folks. Who have a majority interest in making the decision about which path to take to acquire the. Scale of funding that's needed. Something to remember with the, the federal discretionary grant opportunities right now is. They're actually under a category called Justice Forty. And there's a very strong focus on driving the funding to disenfranchised communities. To places and people who haven't had. What's perceived to be their share of federal resources in the past. So that, that changes the equation for certain communities in Maine. You know, it can make you more competitive or it can make you somewhat less competitive. So those, those elements along with what other formula funding we have within the department will. Help us decide where to, where to source the money.
One of the, Steve brings up a great point, one other opportunity that could occur during that discussion. Let's say because of you're making a very walkable community, you may have some transit oriented development in here. You may have some of those things, right, that are greenhouse gases, you're checking some of those boxes. And maybe economically disadvantaged or ethi- ethically disadvantaged. Or ma- maybe you don't quite hit that one quite as high, but, but I think most many communities do to some extent. What we might do as part of that, we're doing this with many communities right now, partnering with them to do the vision. We may actually drive your project and attach it to one in Van Buren and have those compete in a package together. And what that can do sometimes is, you know, you check four of the boxes, they check two. You know, you check them all, but, but they check two a little higher. So one of the things we would do or look at is, especially if they're in the ten to twelve million dollar range, not the twenty or thirty, forty million dollar range. We might mix and match to try to get the most competitive combined project. So we'd be doing all of those things. Our goal, once we've got the PDR, as Nate mentioned, is get it done and get it out to. We want to build it at that point.
So two, two takeaways already is a meeting with the principal group and now an MOU. So I think that's a great idea, especially with the timeline so that we're all on the same page.
What do you think is the timeline for us having a draft letter of understanding?
I think it's really going to depend on that meeting with the principal group and, and with, 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 with your staff and with. Will and trying to get down to what those objectives are. We may not have the finite design elements, but what are the, we, we talked about the objective up to College Hill, right? And we talked about where that gateway might be. We don't have to define it. But having a statement in there that says it's, it is a desire of the group to have a gateway treatment. At somewhere north of College Hill, or something like that. So I think it's really kind of defining some of those, some of those things. So it could be relatively quick, but, but it could be a little longer. So it doesn't take so long time to draft it, it's just making sure the elements are where we want to go. It keeps either one of us from, without, not that can't, any of us can't back up if something goes amiss or something was unanticipated. But it just kind of does build that inertia, right? Keeps us all kind of driving to the same.
For the conclusion of the report, we're getting to that, how finite you need these decisions made? Or is it more of a overall, here's what our vision is, for example, we've had some debates on. What we'd like the sidewalk material to be for how it would look. Would those have to be ironed out with the principal group or wants to use for that decision? Or can we just say, hey, here's, here's what we're thinking about. We don't have like a finite decision yet.
Yeah, I think that's it. I think if we get in that, in that MOU, if we can get our goals. And then if there are specifics that we can hammer down and get Ernie to say, yep, that'll fit, we know that'll happen. We'll put those in. But I think, well, like we just talked about with the gateway treatment, you know, we want a gateway treatment. We want to slow vehicles, we want to slow trucks as they enter. We want to make sure people know they're going to be counting pedestrians, especially with their new developments. And that needs to be considered, designed considerations. And that can also reference the principal group's report as recommendations. Now, there's a lot of design that's going to go on that might, might or may not be able to grab that exactly the way it is. Well, I think it's more getting our, at this point, getting our kind of goals and desires on, on the plate. And that really sets Ernie's. Goals when he starts to design, and he may come back and say, I can't meet that goal, but I could do this, right? You know, so I don't, I think you're right. I think it's more goals, maybe some examples, but we can always reference in that MOU, the principal groups.
Well, the more detailed items would need to be done by the PDR.
Correct. Yes, those would be done by PDR. And, and that, that'll be part of that discussion about share, right? You know, if you want a special treatment and it's substantially more, we're probably going to talk to you on the way to PDR. Yeah, you can do that, but is what it might cost you in twenty-five or twenty-six? Or things like that, or, you know, help may say, or DOT may say, you know, there's going to be some maintenance issues. So I think again, those, those are, those are things that work, work on the way to PDR.
And my other question is with the recently signed bill for national bill. Do you see any more funding coming down DOT's way as a state from that package? And would that be eligible for the town to take advantage of?
I think most of the funding will be tapping and, and it won't be all of it because we may look for some other things. Will be, will, are, are really in the, in, in what we call the IIAJ bill or the BIL bill. You know, bipartisan infrastructure bill or infrastructure job, you know, one of those to get the pass last year. What we really got to pay attention to though, so Congress passes a five-year reauthorization. And then it has, it's your formula funds, you know, they're going to go up to this amount, doesn't quite make inflation, which it doesn't, which is unfortunate. But here you're competitive programs, you can also compete for. And then what happens annually after that is there's an appropriations bill. So every year, so Congress has this bill and builds a structure, but they fund it annually. There are things that didn't get funded in this last round that are somewhat curious. But so there's a new discretionary program around active transportation, like King of walking. That, that is in that five-year bill, but it didn't get funded in its first year, but it'll get funded the next year. So there's some of the grant programs that we believe will transcend one year or another because they're so fundamental. Most states are doing really great things with them, like Raze and a lot of this kind of stuff like Sanford, we talked about. Doing Route One, we, on, on, on a rural one. So, so I think some of them will, will, will transcend, but the sooner we get there before people kind of change. You know, their mind is good, but, 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 but I think it's mostly out of that IIAJ.
And before we get too far down the line, from the water district standpoint, when do you need them to plug in?
So one of the things that will happen when Ernie kicks back up is he'll start doing utility output. So he may have done it a little bit in the last round, but he'll start sitting down, talking about what your plans are, what your timing is. Okay, what your plans are, what your timing is. So that'll happen, that's one of the. That, that, those conversations will happen early in the, in the design process.
So we'll want to make sure that on that timeline that we have that identified for the, not only the water district. But we're having a conversation about potentially putting our utilities or portion of them underground.
Yes.
So.
Or how, how large a portion of the downtown do you have in the center?
Well, what we're hoping to do is if you look at the. The big intersection. Yeah, so we're looking at the big intersection. This is the big intersection here. So anything around the big intersection, you know, obviously you have to have lead time, you know, whatever it takes. Through down to the second intersection, Brown and Shaker, so this section here. And that would allow us to get rid of what one of our residents called the. Third world looking utilities over, there's just so much there. We have utility poles in the middle of our sidewalks.
Right.
And there, there's not much right of way there, so I don't know what, what are we going to do?
Yeah.
We've already, and, and you guys partnered with us on the sidewalks for short, Shaker, and we still had to leave several. And we had to do that because of the, it serviced the intersection and they needed it to, to do the intersection.
I remember the ones that the poles weren't the guy wise were, so.
So from a safety standpoint, allowing us to actually meet A D all the way through the intersections and on our sidewalks. We do have the Morrison Center here in Gray, right here, Jiggy Road. So their residents and clients can't get to the village. You have to cross the street, come across, go across.
Sandy. May- maybe, may, maybe it would be worth having, sharing Will's. You know, proposal, the sort of three phases of varying the utilities, just so they have a sense of.
Will did do. Whenever, whenever you have a chance, maybe send it along to them. He, we did have him take a look at breaking it up into zones for us. This being, you know, the primary zone and then reaching out to maybe the town office. Further than.
So we'll have to, obviously, Will's plan, we'll have to figure out how that nationates with a construction project. You don't want to rip up what you build it, so that's all the stuff that, as part of that utility coordination. I'm sure we'll be sent down with Will and the first handling that plan and how that might fit into this time. We still, obviously, no matter what we do, we have a couple of those.
Just.
Current infrastructure and design obviously is less than satisfactory. Because if there is a problem, we have to shut down traffic in a very congested area. And that not only creates a dangerous situation for our workbooks, but it also slows down the traffic and A and B and C traffic. It will be a difficult obstacle. To what degree will MDOT potentially continue to participate if we give a redesign to move utilities out of the major thoroughfares? That allows us, if we ever have a problem, to not have to shut down traffic and try to avoid those interruptions. Or is there a differential in the ratio of participation in being regardless? So stray from the existing designs right now.
So I'm not sure I can envision what you're saying, so that might be part of my.
We have thousands of traffic ways, getting out of those traffic ways into the side.
So you'd be moving the mains as well? So.
So you're talking about in the intersection area, you, that, your plan is to reach those towns. When you're digging up the roads.
If you go with a sidewalk project, there are one that's actually a town. And also we had an image just along with them right now to break that.
So, so.
Underground utilities, obviously, we cross multiple service lines.
So, so utilities are, you know, your responsibility. But, you know, Ernie, as part of that coordination work with you on how that timing works, how that gets integrated into the project, so.
I think our concerns come back to, we can only raise our money through our rates. And if it's a disproportionately higher cost for linear foot to make those adjustments, we need to have some lead time as well.
So having said that, there's a couple of things, I'll come back to it. There's, um, um, depending on where we go for grants and depending on, you know, whether you can secure some grants. You may be able to too, you know, we obviously work with you on that timeline. So maybe there are multiple grants, maybe, maybe you guys apply for some grants at the same time where we help you find some. So the, the nice part, the, the bad part is, it's, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, depending on what the funding is. But the good part is it's those also, so we have time. And I think when you sit down and have that utility coordination meeting with Dr. Ernie, he's going to say what I said a minute ago. But, but, but we'll continue to work with you to see if there's a way to see, see if I grant people know of anything which you guys can apply for on the same. If, if we can help. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm just thinking in twenty-four, twenty-five, cash may be flowing out of Washington for a while. And we shouldn't be competing against each other to get those earmarks, but rather coordinating our.
That'll be the conversation, absolutely.
Yeah.
And we do that with lots of things right now. It's, it's flowing out in lots of different ways. And sometimes it's supportive and sometimes it becomes conflicted, right? You build something and then somebody gets a grant later. Yeah, so we definitely, I agree with it.
Are there already new sources of funding that are federal? For, for water utilities in the same way that there have been for. But have, have they increased in funding pretty considerably or?
Well, Martha wasn't on scene until.
Right, yeah, I understand.
It's, it's very competitive. Drinking water in the state are, are primarily excellent. But there's something there to be seen when they, when they give a call to apply. Stop everything, work on paperwork.
Right. I've, I've seen some grants secured for towns, but I don't, because I'm not involved with, that's not transportation. I don't know what they were or what they looked like, but I have seen them secured in, in other federal agencies. So they just come across, well, they all come across in a big bundle, but, but I mean, anyway, we can, we can work.
And again, the other part is we shouldn't be competing against each other for some of the same grant points.
And I, I don't think we will just because of the style, but I think, and sometimes there's a benefit there too. If we're talking, back, back to Steve's points on grants, some of them will be about. They'll be safe in our side when, when, when we, when we, when we co-develop a grant. We hire a consultant or we do it in-house, we'll do a lot of it, we'll need a lot from you, like demographic stuff, impacts to the community benefits. So we're doing stuff that, that principal group's doing. But one of those elements oftentimes other investments and also other safety angles. So in a way, we won't be competing. Your problem helps us talk about, you know, and that you're looking for funding. But the only way you get it done is through this road reconstruction at the same time, this road rip up is going to save you money. So there's a lot of those things like in Sanford that we kind of roll, rolled in and it is another safety checkbox, right? So I, we definitely can work. Especially if we go for that.
Just to add to that, we're also. Looking at ways to leverage our brownfields assessment program for some economic revitalization. So we, we might be able to collaborate on that. And after seeing a presentation about the BIL at the Broncos Conference. It seems like there are billions of dollars out there for infrastructure, including water and stormwater. So we'll just have to see what we can help with, so it would be great to collaborate.
Some are very competitive, some aren't as competitive, and some states and some agencies just don't think they can get to it, so they're not applying. And so that's something, after this first round, we'll better understand where, at least on the transportation side, where, where we have an advantage. Because DOT, we're main, is extremely aggressive. We're, we're going to secure all the funding we can get everywhere we can. And not all states are like that because they can't staff, we're small and nimble, right? Yeah, excellent.
The other thing I wanted to point out, just while we were looking at Gray Corner, is that for those two intersections, the principal group plans. And they have, like, they can give you the, the street design plans, the Art Academy, all this sort of stuff that they've been working on. Is that the, they have. Is that the um, they have preserved all of the turn lanes in those two intersections, so we're not, you know, losing a whole lot around traffic flow. And also that the the turn I have been engineered around NACO standards, so as far as trucks turning and turning radius and stuff, that's already built into those plans, so when you get a chance to dig in on that, I I think that's another thing that will hopefully help with bringing this planning together with the work that Ernie's doing and merging that together.
Again, I think sooner um, Ernie can look at them, but then sit down with Will and the principal group and really dig into it, so we'll have a better idea of what what works, what doesn't for us.
Can you talk a little bit about how that process has gone in other places where you've merged your road construction plans in with the the towns, you know, their our plans?
I can, and it's a little different. It's something you and I, you and I talked about Nate at the beginning, um, the way it's been working now and probably last number of years. And I'd like to, you could talk about a lot of places, but I'll again, to talk about Sanford is we have our our V P I program, the way it works, and and of course you have this design project, so you're kind of kind of out of the gate, right? Um, but even some of those, we pulled back. What we'll do is we'll sit down, um, and what we've been doing is hiring and and uh Will's organization has been part of a couple of those, one in North Wyndham. Um, wh- what we do is we usually set up a partnership during the planning process. Where we sign M O U with a town, and it's either called a planning partnership or a village partnership slash planning. Um, and we pool funds, so the town, typically a bigger town, is fifty-fifty. We work together to look at a segment of highway or multiple segments of highway. Do a little bit of, do a lot of what the principal group's done, do a lot of what Will's done, wrap it all together. But it's a partnership with the town, so typically, we're moving through that planning process together, so the part where we have to now sit down isn't a big deal, but but that's kind of happens organically through the process. Then we get to the end of that, and um, I think North Wyndham's a good example, and you've been kind of putfully involved with that. Um, North Wyndham on three oh two, you you've all been through North Wyndham, and it's just very difficult. It's a road. As the commissioner says, it's a bit schizophrenic. It thinks it's a frontage road for businesses. Lot like, little bit like here, right? But it's also even a greater food fair, right? To um, to Naples and beyond, you know, you gotta go through there, and it's just commuter every day. So that road doesn't really know what it wants to be, so what we've done there is plan for these frontage roads on either side or we call them backpede roads in this case, because they'll bind the businesses, to kind of buy back. So now we got to that place um, where we got to the planning. We've now entered into an agreement to start down the P D R path, and we're where we are here. Um, it's a little more efficient because we've already been there with them, but there's still a lot of work to be done. Um, so we're gonna drive that to a P D R, hopefully fairly soon, um, and then do the same thing we described here, now go for a grant. Um, to make three oh two more of a through fair, kind of remove some of the side friction from three oh two, but place it on these package roads that that they have better access, so. And maybe that has utility in some of the other stuff, the longer stuff um, with Shaker Road and some of the other state highways. As principal group does their work, maybe maybe there's a place where we can engage with you there too. The the good part about that for the community is one, they've got us in tow, um, one, but number two is cost some ass as much because we're paying for it. But the same process from there on is what we described at the beginning of this meeting.
Um, all right, so the other big section that we're working on are working our options through, which unknown at this point is the um, portion of Main Street right in front of Manny Motors, the municipal parking lot and one center. Um, and obviously the fur cuts that go down that front and onto Route one fifteen are not sustainable. So right here. This is better. This is future, this is. Alright, so we're looking at this parcel, because you can see this was to be pedestrian safe. And it's just awful. And there's a small, yeah, there's a small sidewalk here, what's left, but there's a pole right in the middle of it. There's another one right here, and then this just travels away. So I think you mentioned that there was uh, preserving the turning lanes, but they're also recommending adding a turning lane on this piece here. Based on this right, as you know, right, waiting is an unknown. And the process of doing an R P to get burned to start working on the easements on this road. So long term. You know.
She didn't explain that to me, just that last time that you said you're you're in the process of.
Right, so through our Route one fifteen discussions.
All the one fifteen. You clarified it.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I knew it was, but I wasn't sure. There's good bones between the two.
You gotta hand off on that one. That's quite all right, there's a lot going on. Um, so long term, you can see that the suggestion would be to completely close off and have a service alley of some sort back here to access the properties instead. Um, but for the immediate project, until, you know, that can potentially be figured out. We have asked staff, and I don't think they've reached out to the property. Yeah, because we just discussed this on the twenty minute of August, but we're gonna sit down with the property owner here and just try to reconfigure this lot to allow him to access this building through this entranceway of the parking lot. Obviously, we'll have to get rid of the guard rail that's in in the middle. Um, and his sign might have to be, but try to have some sort of access through here. Um, so that we can do some curb path closures on here, so um, obviously that hasn't been worked out yet, um, but.
The additional lane where what's.
That would be coming along here, so there'd be a turn.
Uh, we haven't looked at it in detail.
No, yeah, so this whole, yeah, this whole section here will probably need a little bit more. Don't know what, I'm sure that Ernie's goal was to close some of this.
To to the extent that he can, yeah, that would always be, I mean, that's at the intersection, that's not.
Holes here are a real problem.
Yes, agreed.
And I think we're kind of, well, depending on what we do here, we might have a little more room, but that's another reason why these need to go underground.
So what rights of way sort of be figured out here as part of the N B I?
For the Route one fifteen, right, that's on us, so we put money, we moved money out of our TIF. And it's in this year's budget to hire a firm to start that process, to get the property owners in and start
Is that underway?
Yeah, I mean, what really at this point, what we need is a plan, because we've engaged a firm that will do it, but they need to know what they're doing. Yeah, so we're at that place.
So I I think what would be good there, especially where we're so close to the intersection, that would be a good, good element to put into the M O U and the discussion with with Will and Principal Group and sit down and make sure. You know, I'd hate, I'd hate to have a plan for um for that project and then have to do something different later. It'd be nice to uh, you know, sit down with Ernie as part of that, that add that to the list of, and of course, of any way of how those two things can.
Well, how far, how close to the intersection does the project still for Young Road get?
Pretty much.
Right up to it, yeah, and when you say missing a plan, what do we need to do to get that resolved? Engage this guy, because we're talking twelve months minimum probably for them to get all. For easements.
Yeah, but I mean, for for our plan, I mean, we've got, we've got a preliminary.
Yeah, you've got a.
Plan right now, again, we don't have anything, we haven't looked at that turn lane, um, so.
So you need the piece to get to the intersection more defined. And that plan that we had you the draft remind me that had sidewalks on both sides going up, right?
Uh, we talked about just having sidewalk on Main Motor's side. And then it then it crosses over.
At the ham, at Brown Street and then up to Apple Tree.
Then goes up the right side.
Okay.
So obviously, this additional lane is going to need to be received by so so those just things need to be.
Yeah, I mean, I think from the principal group, I think they have some on-street parking and then it transitions into a turning lane.
Ju- just to point where we need to coordinate.
Yeah.
For right sidewalks for everything there.
So from your your standpoint, though, the the preliminary plan should give us enough information for the easement work to start, or do we need to?
Yeah, I mean, I think based on from previous discussions, right now, again, that section of of Yonah Road from the intersection of Main Street up to just past uh, Brown is all, uh, that's, that's actually got a defined right of way. And then from Brown up, it's rock.
Which is interesting, that does, it's just, just in, it just doesn't seem like most places it would, so surprised you didn't tell me that.
Yeah, so, but we do need some additional right of way, because there there's a section in here that they were, we were looking at on-street parking.
Like, yeah.
In front of the gray little parcel there.
So the Joes and the gray, this is, so we own this piece here, the brown.
So there is some additional right of way already that we need in there without a turn lane.
Yeah.
And you add that turn lane in.
And then that needs to be contiguous with the ratings going around there. Those two things should match together at some point, right?
And I mean, right now he's, there's a lot of stuff that's.
Some temporary something.
Well, that's, you know, if we're, if we're working out a a different access point, then, you know, maybe that's the trade. In that discussion. And more trading. Um, so really, the from the the portion for the uh, burn is the rot piece from Brown up. And.
Well, no, they're gonna need to be involved down here too, because we're gonna have some.
Okay.
Be invested right away.
Okay, so we should be able to clobber together once you, Principal D O T, need to talk about from Brown Street to the intersection. Enough information to engage that.
One, just one other caution, I don't think it's a big, I don't, it's a big deal if we do it wrong, but it's not a big deal to work through, it's just we probably need to, if we are gonna have to take any right of way as part of our project that matches your project, or you take right of way prior to that, that's for this project. Um, we just have to talk, make sure we talk to our right of way people to make sure it's, it's, it's sequestered or it's detailed enough, so we don't run in trouble with the Uniform Act as we start to move down our project and make something non-discipient, so we just need to, it it will well knows that can be. There there's a lot of pitfalls in there, so we just need to get Heath involved, and Ernie will get Heath involved just to make sure what you're doing and how it matches and what we're doing, especially if there are things like property swaps, that's that, that there's some federal issues around that, so we just need to make sure we stay coordinated, that's all.
Right. So this to me is probably one of the highest priority discussions then.
Yes.
Because we've got to get that firm going.
And and make sure we don't, yes, for all the reasons.
Because while we're waiting for this to get funding, we're asking for this funding sooner, if we can.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And then your emergency fixes in for you. Starting over here.
So. But that, that, if you achieve that, that's definitely a good, good cleanup, that's, it's a good, good thing to get done, yeah.
Any question on any of that? I didn't have a question on that specifically, in fact, it's a little off topic, but um earlier on in the meeting, you mentioned you still needed to collect traffic data. I'm just wondering how much the current crap traffic data you collect will limit what we can do in the future for the state road, like in terms of speed limits and um, the width of the road, um, because today's current traffic is not the traffic we'd like to see in the future, it's not what we want to design towards, so I'm just, I want to make sure we're not potentially gonna have limits on things we want to do based on today's.
So like, what might those be, it's like, and and we're trying to.
Like, you know, like speed limits and we, I know there was some regulations on the width with the roadways based on whether or not large trucks are coming through, but we would like to redirect that traffic, ideally, so they're not coming through the village, so. I I'm just curious what types of traffic data you will be looking at and how that might impact decisions we can make later on.
So um, it gets back to something we talked about very briefly at the beginning. And that this is a state highway, we need to strike a balance.
Right.
And that balance needs to be struck, and where that balance is um, will determine on traffic, determining on how the road is utilized, um, we to go to things like ten-foot lanes to require a design exception, we're looking at those with a lot with a set of new eyes, um, because we want the village to be a village, we, we started it out with. Um, we understand your objectives and in the village, our objectives are your objectives, you know, we want to um, build roadways that are uh, consistent with the village in a village. Now, we don't wanna disrupt traffic beyond the village, so if you, it yours is a little different, but if you have Dresden, like Dresden on Route twenty-seven, if you haven't been through there, come down a hill, you hit Dresden, you go back up the other side. You know, how we manage traffic through Dresden to kind of uh, comment for that section, uh, but not comment for miles, right? We we wanna make the village the village. So I think there's some latitude there, it's really gonna deter, it's really gonna depend on when we really start to look at it, um, how the road functions. Um, D R T is in the interest of, is interested in managing tra- managing how traffic passes through. We're, we wouldn't be as um as interested in, say, a truck has the destination in North Gray on one hundred. Um, trying to encourage them to go to Auburn to come back, because that's not, and I don't think you would either, that's not green house gases, that's not.
Avoiding the tolls or not taking twenty-six A to get down farther up twenty-six.
Yeah, I get that part, and I think we all have a different perspective of how much that occurs, but but I get that, so we we can do some things, but we need to strike that balance, and I think as we get into the design, as we begin to design, understand how things interact, that'll, that'll deter, that'll answer your question. Um, but I think back to the M O U, um, we all have the same objectives to make Gray Village greater village. But Gray Village still also, unfortunately, because most downtowns are located on state highways, which is unfortunate, Maine, but it still is, it's still, trucks are still gonna need to go up Route one hundred and down Route one hundred. Even if the turnpike didn't exist, right, or if for or whatever, right? So I I'm not a very good answer, but the answer is we will look at that in earnest with you.
Right.
But but we're never gonna go get them all, that's right.
So the the good news about the proposal you have, or the design principle is it has eleven-foot travel lanes, which wouldn't require any exceptions, so. You know, we've, we've cleared the Colley Hill intersection with the design. We've voided the roundabout. We look, we've not eliminated any traffic, travel lanes in the intersection. And this is all designed with eleven feet, so it ought to make things a lot easier.
I'm not saying we couldn't have looked at that, I'm just saying that's, that that requires some discussion.
I'm just glad to hear that it sounds more possible than it did.
I think it's possible for all of us to meet our goals, right? And and I think that goals usually when that happens, right, um, you know, I've been married for thirty-five years, Pam and I meet our goals most of the time. Not a hundred percent hers, not a hundred percent mine, but we meet our goals, and I think we could, we can do that. But we gotta meet the states and the regional goals, and I, I'll I'll tell you, one of the great things about um having Zoom now, I I know when Lewiston got done, they got their policy and continued, is you can go back and review it, and we did get to watch what what Nate just said, you get to watch, you go through that. That was helpful for us before we came to the meeting, so kind of a little bit of where you headed.
The one other good news is that it sounds like M T A is ready to do the Route twenty-six, twenty-six A signage change, and we've got it in our budget. And and when you all are ready with the sign asked survey that's happening, we will be able to eliminate a lot of that heavy truck traffic right out of the gate. So even if you did traffic counts this month, once that change is made, we're all ready, hopefully, if things go right, be reducing that traffic load right out of the gate.
Agreed, um, I think a couple of things there, um, did you get your ordinance? Probably, we're, we're working on that, can you, can you share it when you do? I don't know if that, what we sent you was helpful at all, it was, it was a big scowl to get to the.
Yeah, we discussed it in our last.
We probably just took it out of the law and made something up. Um, I I do think Nate, um, I agree with you that there will be an impact. I do think you're gonna see some traffic in um at Gray, you know, at at the the intersection that maybe you don't see today, because I think some does come in off twenty-six, turn and go north, that, well, it's a lot, but I think some now is gonna have to come through the entire. But but not because they're being diverted, but because they're going one place. So there's always, there's, there's good consequences, there's always a little unintended, you know, anytime you push a balloon, it sticks out somewhere. So, there's always, there's, there's good consequences, there's always a little unintended, you know, anytime you push a balloon, it sticks out somewhere else, right?
Well, I think the other good, the other good piece with the gray village is it's not very long. And so one of the points I think Carlos made, um, when he was joining us in our workshop is. The amount of time we're talking about where a truck has to slow down. It's very short.
Yeah.
It may seem like a lot for them. Not hours or ten or fifteen minutes, it's.
Like the person that passed me on the way to work and I ended up getting to.
Yeah.
Getting to my location before they did. Yeah, so that, yes, it does, it does seem like a shortcut, and cars as well, right?
Yeah.
But if it flows better, if it flows more orderly than it does today. That's in general a benefit, right, and it wasn't like that coming in here this afternoon, I went to the Tulsa to get a cup of coffee, then I came over.
Yeah, that's, that turn off Brown Street is, if you go into the other lane.
Shakers pointed this way, Browns pointed that way.
That's the primary goal here is, you know, we want it to look great. Um, we want it to look like the downtown, but it's, it's hazardous, it's just one hundred percent hazardous. Throughout the whole stretch, doesn't matter if you're down next to, uh, China Gray or coming off the highway, that whole stretch there. I mean, there's not even, um, sidewalks on the bridge, when you come off the highway, for you to get from point A to point B, so. I think, um. Putting it together, having principal come in and working with you guys should get covers it all.
I think it does, I think you're absolutely, and I think, um, I think I heard maybe Will or there was some discussion during your other ones about where. Crossings would be, and that is gonna be a challenge, because you have so many intersections so close together. And how you manage traffic and what the key lengths are, it's, it's, it's gonna be a challenge, you know. And, but, but it's a, it's, it's a human scale challenge that we should be doing in villages. I, I gotta tell you, it's weird, and I know this is off topic, but Steve told it to me when I first came back to DOT from Lewiston, and I've. And I hear it over and over again, no matter what community you go to. It used to be, when I was at DOT, especially when I was in maintenance, when do you pay them, first thing in the door, when do you pay them something? Now it's how do I get this place more pedestrian friendly, the statewide, the shift. Across the entire state is really, it's, it's amazing, you know, people are really giving downtowns back to human scales again, which. We get that objective.
Observations. Would be great, may not be great, you have to determine it, but. And so I was coming out of, uh, the Yonah Road, I witnessed. A tractor trail coming down one hundred, obviously headed towards the five three cylinder was. Makes the right turn at the armor, at the, uh, monument. So. Either that or he's following on Star or some other, right? Either way, he's gonna turn, goes up to the intersection by the parker's door. And then realizes he's gonna make the left turn, going back down again, he'll only do that once, he'll only do that one, and after that. You're gonna go for the shortest distance between the two points.
Yes, turn Google Maps off. So I think we just think problematic, we're, we're ready, um, Steve, I know you guys have worked with Steve, Steve, really now it's in Steve's hands of getting the sign.
We did, uh, we did review your weight limit ordinance, um, at our August meeting. Our first September meeting, um, I'm assigned that task and was out, so I missed the last meeting, um, so we will be getting that.
Nice.
Alec pointed out, um, something that we needed to tweak in our local road ordinance, so we're gonna try to do, um, cause we were, we're gonna pull the. Penalties and all the other items that you left blank from our local ordinance, so, um, that should be happening in the next sixty days, so we'll get that to you. Um, the other big, uh, discussion point, uh, is stormwater, which is the big, big, big one. Um, and part of that is, um, us trying to determine our standpoint. Um, what we would like to see for volume in the village, you guys are gonna determine capacity based on existing. Development, um. Is that accurate? Do you add for some future development?
Yeah, so I think what, I think what.
Flow is really.
Yeah.
Where does it all go?
So, so that, that, that's what will be a discussion, but I think that's really an important one, and I think Ernie. Um, had mentioned this at one of our very first meetings with, with Nate and, and that is. Really understanding, I'm glad you've done what you've done, understanding where those points of. What's coming into the highway, what's expected to come into the highway, um, and what, um, and where those points are. And then we'll work to do the best of design, we very know there's a. Hot budget of things out there in the road, and that we'll have to navigate through, but I think that was one of the things that, um. He mentioned to staff that we really do need to know, uh, what's realistic and what's, what's realistically planned. Like the housing development we just talked about, and is that, is that entering. Main Street, or is there another avenue for that, um, so knowing those early on in the design will help, help with transmission.
Yeah, and we're hoping also that if there's a side street network, that that can also be used for some of the.
That's, yes.
The, so that water and stormwater flow could be engineered into that, rather than all having to come down once.
There are some, there are going to be some limitations down along the turnpike.
Well, and that's kind of our question, do, do you have a handle or how soon in the process would you get a handle on? What that capacity is at the turnpike, cause that really. That is the big million dollar question, where we can do our thing and.
I think that's really a question for Ernie, um, and when. When, when he gets, I know we had, we went around a little bit about the outfall of the turnpike, and. There are some, um, stuff from the turnpike, there's some stuff from us, but it doesn't seem to be inconsistent, so I know he had to do some.
There's some challenges downstream with turnpike.
There's some challenges, but, yeah.
Actually, I'm gonna bring that up in just a second, so, um, should we put that as part of the M O U timeline? Because that seems to be like.
Sure, it's on the way to P D R, but yes, it'll be. Absolutely.
For us, cause if you guys are gonna come in and say, okay, we're gonna do this analysis, we're gonna put in X pipe. But if we want something larger for future.
And then we need to know whether it'll work for all the reasons and beyond, right?
Yes.
We need to know whether it's gonna work.
Right, so if that capacity is Y and it can't do anything higher than Y. Then that decision's kinda made for us.
So I think that's one of those iterative part of the whole design process that we'll be working with. Alec and everyone else. But knowing, having you know what you're doing, and are there other, that's an ace point, are there other avenues to manage it, or. There may even be some things where Ernie's able to. About, you know, you're gonna have to do a little more intention, um, to spread it out, I, I don't know what those are. I, I know I've looked in those a bunch of times, and I know what's there today, but I have no idea what the, what the ability to, maybe, maybe Will's looked at it, but.
Well, I mean, we've, we've videoed, we've seen some TV, all this from. All the way down Main Street, basically, we don't have a. Great understanding from the, the main intersection down to the turnpike, other than we know there's a.
But all that'll go into, it's just what, what, what can happen, right?
Sandy. Do we know the capacity of Short Shaker? Is there any additional capacity on Short Shaker, Will?
Capacity, stormwater capacity?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can't answer that, I, I don't know.
I mean, I, I just throw it out there is, you know, for that development, obviously. On that side of Main Street, stormwater can go in either direction, and that may be. Just something to keep in, in mind when we get further down the road.
Extensives is there, maybe, uh, when we did our sidewalk project out there, we didn't touch the, we. We touched the catch basins in Short Shaker, we did not touch the conveyance pipes in Short Shaker.
Right, yep.
The, update the outfall pipes, which there are four, four of them. Um. But we didn't really, I don't think we changed the size, um.
No, and the, but we, the area that comes to mind for this is the. Outfall that goes near, um. The cemetery. Yeah, there's a intersection between the intersection and the old town office that goes cross country up to the cemetery.
Well, they all go cross country, so there, there's one right here that goes up towards the cemetery.
Uh, that has secondary limitations in the cemetery.
And then we've got, we've got another one that's here, and then there's two more, we work our way. Back towards Turnpike there, so, um. You know, the, the, the storm drain pipe in the road is, is pretty decent size, uh, fifteen, fifteen to eighteen inch. It's not huge, but I mean, it's, there probably is some capacity there, but, um. We'd have to, we'd have to model that, we didn't, that wasn't part of our scope and.
Oh yeah, absolutely, no, I, I really wasn't expecting the answer, I was just throwing it out there as, as we. Come to understand what we can do on Main Street, there may be an opportunity to. You know, route some towards Short Shaker if we reach capacity on Main Street, just.
Interesting. A lot of those outfalls probably end up at the same place. As Main Street.
They do, I think, I know I've walked, I walked that one, but I haven't been there.
Yeah, all roads lead to.
Downhill.
Alright, and then, um. Alright, so that, yeah, yeah, so, so the turnpike capacity is obviously critical. Trying to find out when that is early, as early as possible.
And I think, I think always for Main Street, or that was, that one of the next steps Ernie was gonna work on. But I, I think Will's right, not only under the turnpike, but beyond. And then, you know, then we get into things like, um. How far to drain achievements, if there's, first, you know, this, um, prescribed easements today. Then we're changing things substantially, especially if you're changing things substantially to. Do that, the easements adequate, and do they need to change, and where do they need to change, and there's, there's a lot of. A lot of things with those, when, when you start changing catchment areas. Hydrographs and things like that.
Well, and from a really long range standpoint, we've also talked about. Other water related projects in the center of town, that's all I'll say about that. And we're ultimately years down the road, um. How that treatment might fix that, um. It could be the kind of thing where twenty years from now, when something has to happen with the bypass, or something has to happen somewhere else. You know, there may be an opportunity to plan, um, for that project too, and I know that's really far in the future, but. I think those are the kinds of things we just can't let fall off. The, the list of things to keep in mind when we start thinking about stuff, because some of the potential is really pretty far down the road.
So it was not on the list.
Not in my lifetime, but it will be in somebody's.
So drainage is definitely, overall, not only. Main Street, but the city and then other implications at point six, so.
I think our goal is to make sure that we're not. Capping ourselves at a certain amount, that's not gonna take us to, for twenty years. Or twenty five.
I don't know the answer, but I'm guessing twenty six probably is the solution for everything, just given all things you just talked about, but, but, but we, but we should really go with it.
Yeah, um, and, and then the other area that you talked about, other problems down the road is, is on West Gray. Out to Flood, FEMA floodway.
So basically, we don't know what's under the turnpike. Uh, but beyond that, and then you went out and looked, I believe, if I remember, it was like two forty twos underneath the bypass. And I don't think I've got those numbers, I, I know you sent it to me an email, uh, and then in, uh. Northbrook. There's.
Yeah, I have it right here, Will, the, there's the, I believe a box culvert of unknown dimension under the turnpike. Under twenty six A, the bypass, there's two forty two inch. Yep, R C P, there's two thirty six inch, um, under Northbrook.
Which is downstream of the bypass.
And then two thirty six inch R C P again under West Gray Road, Route two oh two, and that leading into the floodway.
There's another piece in the middle there, McConkey Road, which is considerably bigger than all.
Alex, have you asked the turnpike for, for what theirs, theirs is?
I have not. So the challenge beyond that, uh, under West Gray Road, so you said, what was it, was it?
West Gray Road was thirty six inch.
One thirty six inch, two thirty six inch under West Gray Road, and then downstream of that. Is, in my opinion, a very clogged sedimented in wetland area. And then there's a private, old pond and a private berm with a culvert outlet. Down below that, before it actually gets to. There, there, Brook, and then finally the Pleasant River. So that, those two thirty sixes under West Gray Road are pretty much West Gray and Northbrook sedimented in, I mean, they're. In pretty rough shape.
I, I think that gets to, and I don't know how far, cause I'm not an expert in this, but that gets, certainly gets to. But Will, Will just described, regardless of what changes are made. Um, there are going to, I suspect there'll be some issue left to look at, drainage easements and drainage rights. Uh, until you get to the first. Flowable water body, which sounds like it's down beyond this pond, so there are a bunch of challenges, I, I think, that Will and, and I'll just describe.
Yeah, and I think Doug has reached out to the state to try to get a little bit more information, since it's, that section is designated FEMA.
Well, he reached out to Sue Baker, uh, relative to the. The wetland, I believe, down below West Gray Road.
Well, yeah, and, you know, I just, again, not from a, um. Just as a point of, of, I guess, example, we walked away from finishing one fifteen down into the village. Because the problem was hard. Here we are in twenty twenty two, the problem is still hard, but we're having to solve it. Uh, eventually over time, work will be done on the turnpike, on the bypass, and on two oh two. And it's in everybody's best interest to. Deal with these things as they come up in these, when these smaller opportunities, then when we leave them. So that they're really hard, and we will either walk away from them, or they become even that much more expensive to fix. And so that's one of the reasons why I brought that up, I don't wanna create another situation where. People in the future have to walk away from a potential. Project that could benefit the community, um, because we didn't do the work that was hard.
Maybe the size and condition of that structure, I might be able to help you get from.
That'd be great. Um, and then, of course, the, the next biggest. Any of those fixtures is the actual big intersection. Which is the primary. And again, I think that that's, you can see that we're looking to. Uh, narrow that up and make it feel more like a four way intersection, which is actually what it is. Doesn't feel that way. Pull in there, it feels like there's eight highways converging, when there's really only four. So if we could get that back to feeling and looking like a four way, um, I think it would impact behavior. I just happened to, I can't remember where it was, but we were out. In the Midwest, and we were driving in Iowa City, and there were a couple of lights that went out. And it was just a regular four way intersection, and people just behaved properly. Every other. Easy to understand, everybody reverts to driver ed. Yeah, and I mean, you, you can't, that's not gonna happen with everyone, but I think when you're in an intersection, like the one we have now, and the lights go down. Everyone panics, because they have no idea what they're supposed to be doing.
I know, I've been through a few times after snow, and you, you plowed, it's clean, but you can't see the striking anymore.
And you're lost.
People get, people get confused, I don't know if the people from the way, or people that are here, they just, it's, it's a mess.
Are too wide and going, having to go around the intersection to take a left, that island, no one does that. Um, everyone at this table has seen almost head ons. Repeatedly, even going the wrong way, um, and then obviously Brown Street and Shaker not being aligned, people don't know how to take the left on left. Get lost. There's too much space.
We have compounded that issue yesterday and today, and probably the next couple of days with a, a catch basin repair in the middle of the lane.
Now people will have no idea, oh no, there's a cone. I had it down till we put the cone out. Um, Sandy?
No, I was gonna say hi, Sandy, it's Carl, I mean, here from, from some of all the conversation. I, I agree with the, um, I, I was seeing all the, the situation with Brown and the, the turn lane that. I, I, now that you hear the conversation right now, I think you're, I, I agree with you, it's the. It's probably too much space for everybody, for, it doesn't intersect. It's probably too much space for everybody for, in that intersection, so that turning lane is, doesn't, I don't, I don't know why I, I have it on, on the plan at the end. It was, but I agree, should not be there, that turning lane is not needed. On Brown. Especially because, like, there's nobody that's gonna turn left on Brown as much as they're turning left from, uh, German Road. So the amount of, of left turns are not as, as significant, and it does create a, a wider intersection there. And even encourage people to use Brown as a shortcut sometimes, which might, we might not want that either.
Okay, good to know, Carlos, thank you, and Vanessa's here, so she heard that.
Um, at the intersection, um, where.